...two thousand twenty. Tonight, we have one tabled matter and three scheduled items. We do have proof of legal publication from Webster Herald. And we'll be going, but first, if you could stand please for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Catherine, if you can call roll, please.
Sure. Mr. Garan.
Here.
Mr. DiNardo. Mrs. Volo.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Okay, we have a full board tonight. So introduce yourself for the record.
Man LaRue Associates, representing John Kishani for 185 Lake Road. We're looking to obtain four area variances for the property to develop site plans for residential home. We have spoken prior to the meeting and have chosen to revise our variance requests. We'll start right at the top, letter A. We're gonna keep the seventy-nine hundred square feet for eighteen thousand as required. Letter B, instead of having forty-three feet for a front setback, we would like to ask for thirty-five feet, where seventy is required. We would like to further specify the side setbacks. We would like to request for five feet on the easternly property line. And we'd like to request seven sixty-five, seven point six-five feet on the westernly property line. And lastly, section D, where thirty feet is the maximum allowable building height, we would like to request thirty-six feet. With doing this, we feel that we would be more in conformance with the zoning, as well as the priorly power-approved property at 181 Lake Road, which was recently approved for similar variances.
Do you have a revised plan at all, or not?
We don't at this time.
We're using the same plan.
We would have the same plan, we were just...
We're gonna make it there.
Yeah, we would make it fit within those requests.
Do we have to re-advertise item B?
Yeah.
Well, we do.
Yeah.
It's gonna go through, he's gonna go through them again. I request the same thing, just so I can make the revisions, but I think Eric's right. Go ahead.
Yeah, they're requesting a thirty-five foot front setback, if I'm not mistaken, where we were advertised for a forty-five foot front setback.
That's correct. That's what I have.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, I'm sorry, I drew a pencil mark through mine.
Now, in your, in your planning... Because we don't know exactly what you have in mind, could you still do the forty-three foot front setback, or how it's becoming longer and deeper?
If we were to wish, I think we should stay with the forty-three.
We can maintain that.
Yeah, because we can't, we could...
If it were to change, we could always come back.
Okay, because we can't consider that, meaning it was advertised as forty-three, and we wouldn't be able to hear that one time.
Yeah, and I just wanna clarify, for everyone who's interested in this information...
This agenda had to be prepared the following morning after the previous meeting, due to the Thanksgiving holiday. So we just kept what was originally proposed from there and carried it over.
Sure.
I was not aware that the setback for the front was going to be increased, so...
Okay. All right, well, we had closed the public portion of the meeting, but since he made some changes of substance with his request, I'm gonna reopen that. And then we'll also, you know, have more discussion amongst the board, of course. Bob, you weren't here.
I think I was here for, not the last meeting, but the meeting before.
Yeah.
So I was here for that.
So that was substantially the same as what we discussed last week.
Actually, it might be two meetings ago. Three meetings.
Yes, good evening. Your applicant for the meeting tonight, we can't get them to phone in.
Oh. Are they at the rice building?
Are they at the courthouse? They're probably at the town hall.
We're at the...
We're at the courthouse building, behind the town hall.
The court... We're at the town hall.
Oh, yeah, the building to the, to the north.
Field Library.
The building to the north?
Yep.
At the courthouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bye.
Yeah, but you went the wrong way with the front setback, though. If you would, if you would, if you would increase it, if you would've gone for forty-three plus, then it wouldn't have to be re-advertised. But you actually decreased it, which is more substantial, so it wouldn't have to be...
But I'm going to go forward with the request for the forty-three.
Okay.
So that we can close the meeting and move on.
Okay.
Okay, so basically, you tabled, Bob, because we didn't have a full board. The presentation basically showed other properties on Lake Road that had smaller setbacks, side setbacks. And, you know, he did a PowerPoint presentation, but the board, I sensed that the board wasn't satisfied with what he was asking, so he chose to table. And we barely have the extra road also, obviously. So we did, we did pass or approve a variance on a property at 181 with a thirty-four foot height, building height. And I believe they have eleven and eight feet, because the building did a jog on the side.
Yes.
That's why we had a plan, because I didn't know if it was straight or if there was jogs on that side or what, you know? So it's probably just a straight, straight back.
We have a jog.
Okay.
So our garage also, it seemed like the board liked that, was the garage will be further, probably in excess of ten.
You just got the microphone, John.
Please.
Yep.
So the, I am John Kishani. The garage also will have a jog. And it appeared that the board liked the idea of the garage being in excess of ten feet from the lot line. But we're asking for the seven point six-five, which is exactly what this board gave 181. And I know there's a jog, we always had a jog also. We just didn't label every nook, because we're looking for side setback variance. I think that's explanatory. And the only thing about the roof I'd like to point out is, this board did approve the Morrells' design. And I don't know which way they ever decided they were gonna put their roof. I know Mr. Hauser was saying that because of the westernly winds, the roof should be up higher on the east. And I wanna point out that, I'm gonna suspect, I don't know if the board knows that, but we approved a wall on my side that's probably gonna be in excess of forty feet for that slope roof. I don't wanna do that. I'm not gonna exceed that height. I do wanna have ventilation, and I do believe that mean, or the average roof, can be achieved with a lower pitch roof at the thirty-six we're requesting, where I originally started at thirty-nine. So between bringing the ceilings down and bringing the roof pitch down, but still having a standard roof. Again, I believe that the Morrells' plan is very, very attractive. But if you stop and think what the average was, to get thirty-four, you likely have a side wall, five feet from the lot line, the east side, that's gonna be probably forty, or perhaps in excess of forty feet. And I think that's more intrusive. I think the word was towering. And again, I don't wanna pick on them, they're lovely people. But I think I'm softer with a, with a gable roof that comes down to a fascia on each side that will probably be around thirty or thirty-one feet or so. Certainly not a wall that's forty. Thank you.
Just for the record, I believe their total height was thirty-eight feet.
Yes.
Based on...
Because the roof, the upper, the third floor level, the upper level of that, didn't go all the way out on all four sides.
Right, correct.
Okay, Bob, this meeting is open to public comment. Our number here is eight seven two seven zero one one, if you wanna give us a call. We did have some write-in. Josh, do you have Mrs. Gascon's letter?
Which one?
The last one we received, it was a short letter, actually. I think she said, basically, she'd like to see an eight-foot side setback on her side.
I can read it.
Maybe we can read that into the record.
Dear zoning board members, this is from Robert and Marjorie Gascon. We are writing to express our hope that you will not grant the request for a variance for a five-foot setback on the east boundary of 185 Lake Road. Recently, the board approved the project at 181 Lake Road that allows for west-side setbacks ranging approximately from eight feet to eleven feet from the neighboring property to the west. The two projects at 181 and 185 have reciprocal easements between the two properties, giving each a five-foot setback to the property lines. Please consider granting the applicant for 185 Lake Road a variance for an east-side setback of no less than eight feet. That would allow for a structure similarly sized to the one proposed at 181 Lake Road and would create a harmonious appearance in the general area. This seems like a fair compromise for all parties. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Were there any others? That's the only one I saw.
No, there were no others that...
Okay, that was... How much, you said your garage steps in, you know how far back that is? Because it steps in, because your front door is on the front. Is it that?
It is three feet, so...
Oh, so it's just a three-foot jog?
It is a three-foot jog.
The plan presented last week doesn't show a jog. It's basically a rectangle. Where would you put the jog?
Through the garage and the door. And the door will probably end up by there. But that'd be a jog. The west will not be. Excuse me. Again, I think we're asking for seven point six-five feet, which is what was granted to the... And I have no problem making that a condition of the board to have a jog. So that the corner of the garage will be more than the seven point six-five feet.
Seven point six feet.
Right, and I may need to point that out there, because he doesn't see that.
We're proposing our plan...
But it's gonna change, because I have to make it now.
It's, it's gonna change slightly. We're proposing a front jog beyond the base of the garage of six feet.
Six feet back?
That was on, that was on the other plan, the site plan was given to the board.
This is your job?
No, 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 this is the site plan.
This is the Man LaRue site plan.
You know, Mr. Snyder, we run the risk of, what comes first, the cart or the horse? We don't deserve that. You know, I think that I'm gonna try to satisfy the setbacks that were imposed that might be considered standards in the neighborhood. I don't wanna ask for anything more than what has been granted before. It's not about what do I want, it's what fits with the neighborhood and what will enhance properties in the top of west. That's what I'm here for. It's not for what I want. But we've already established a standard next door that I think I can be harmonious with, and I'm hopeful that the board can appreciate the, your word was the compromises, to kind of come in a little closer to what the perceived standards were. And if the board would like to see a final plan one day, they would allow the seven point six-five. It's just that we have probably two years of steps ahead of us looking for a, if we get a variance, before we can ever build.
The variance is only good for a year, though.
I know, I know, and that's another thing I wanted to ask the board about. And he's the expert in the, in the FEMA and the...
I mean, if we, if we granted it, speaking for myself, I, I don't think we have a condition of granting the same thing over again.
Yeah.
But the variance that we, that we grant, if we grant it tonight, it's only good for a year.
Yeah, and Mr. DiNardo is correct. And, you know, we don't wanna run into that. It's great that he brought it up tonight. I was hoping, this was before I left, to, you know, discuss what the board might like, because we do have a long process ahead with state DEC and with federal wetland and the permitting process. And I think I mentioned, you know, two months ago when we first came in, maybe it was three months ago, this is a long road. And it starts with you. And if we can at least get some traction, then we can go to the next step. And, you know, if we have to come in before your board, or if you would grant us two years, whatever the board might wish, which the, I suppose we would have to vote, right? Do you have any thoughts?
You know, so next would be the joint permit process, and then we also have to do our FEMA application, that's upon completion. Well, it would be a few steps throughout the building process, but the final removal is once the building is complete for FEMA. The biggest, the next obstacle would be the joint permit, who would issue?
I don't have a problem with two years, and I don't have a particular problem with seeing a final plan for the structure. As long as we've got everything hammered out, once we grant the variance, the actual design becomes a moot point. It's more the footprint and getting that, as you put it, harmoniously developed with the neighboring properties, so...
I don't have a problem before a building is permitted, you make this condition of your variance that the board sees.
Personally, as an engineer, I don't wanna redesign the house, so that's cool.
Okay, for an elevator, though, right?
Oh, I, I'm not even that worried about the elevator, as long as we can, you know, shoe-worn everything in. That's, that's up to you guys.
So, can we at least mark up this footprint, so that we have what the new width will be, what the width of the step will be, and the distance that the step will be back? I, I don't wanna just carte blanche approve without having those dimensions.
If we were to accept the whole to the board, if we could utilize the site plan that we had before, and this'll probably change a lot of interior layout, just through...
Just, yeah, just exterior dimensions.
But if we were to utilize the site plan that you have, and reduce it to the point where we would have seven point six-five on the west side of the property, I think we can build within that. And you're, you're basically forcing me to go a direction of, this is what you had to work with, John, now design it to work with what we established as a standard. And like I said, the best I can offer is to come before building permit is requested and allow the board to see the plan. They would allow a seven point six-five, they would allow a jog, so the garage is not closer to the lot line, in fact, farther from the lot line than the seven point six-five feet. I think we should have no problem working with the forty-three foot front setback. The idea there would be able to put more cars in a driveway and not put them out in the road, like many of the other neighbors who have established another standard in the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, but if you're staying at thirty-four three feet, you've still got your parking in the driveway, so that's fine.
What was, what was your rationale for starting up that front setback? I'm just curious what your thought process was.
Probably my mistake, because I looked at what was offered to the other applicant and tried to offer a couple additional feet, so that I was farther off the state right away, which would make perhaps the board feel more comfortable with the request to be farther off. But I think I could be much farther off and still work with that.
I was just curious why you were gonna reduce it to thirty-five?
Because the neighbor to the west was just offered, given a variance to be thirty-three.
Okay.
So I thought, well, to give the flexibility, because now I know it's back to the design.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be easier to design with thirty-three, and I could always go forty-two.
Right. And if you keep it back further than the variance, then you're okay.
The idea would be, hopefully, to push the house back further off Lake Road, while still being sensitive to the one-to-hundred-foot DEC wetland line.
What does the board feel about the height? I just, we've been talking side setbacks.
Well, don't forget the height is the average height, so it's stacked to the peak of the structure.
Right.
And we've established that precedent in that neighborhood of, you know, thirty, I believe, thirty-four feet. I don't have an issue with it.
You don't have an issue with thirty-four or thirty-six?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay. Without plans, you're, you're kinda speculating a bit on floor thickness, because of their span joists and so on. So we'd have difficulty denying thirty-four feet, because we just gave it to somebody else last meeting. Is it, since you don't have final drawings, is it possible to go with that and have your architect try and, because there are different type of truss joists? You know what I mean? There are different, there are different depths and so on and so forth. Is that something you'd be willing to try to work on?
Could I, could I request Mr. Chairman that, let me share with you, the issue I have, you're a home builder, you know about air ventilation, you know about insulation, you know about the standards and the codes rise every six months. There's things that have to happen in and at it. I haven't reviewed the neighbor's plan, but I'm concerned for him at the thirty-four. And he may have to come back in, he may have to change his world. I'm trying not to come back in. You guys don't wanna see me anymore than you have the last three months. I think for two feet higher, there's nobody in this world's gonna stand at the road and see my peak versus a rub, you know, a roof, and gonna say, which one's higher? I don't think that's gonna change. If anything, the one with the taller wall will appear a pipe. So I don't think thirty-six is that much more to ask for a peak, which will likely put the side walls below thirty. And I think that's, it's less towering in, in, you know, some of the open discussion words. So if I can make it smaller, absolutely, I would try to. But I have to start at some point. This has been about three months of asking for variances. My problem was that I've watched twenty years of variances, and I was completely spun by the variances that were offered, as we said two weeks ago, one and a half feet, three feet, two feet, and the board granted variances. So I thought, oh my goodness, five feet on each side with grass? Nobody's ever proposed it. I walked out, shaking, by comments that were made. So I think today, if we were allowed to move forward, with seven point six-five on one side, five feet on another, a gable roof, maybe we can hip the roof, that would, you made a great idea, that could also, also soften the roof toward Lake Road. At the last meeting, Chairman Barone mentioned it might be nice to hip the roof, maybe to look less towering. But I don't wanna kid anybody, and I don't want anybody to go up a ladder. I think thirty-six feet can be worked within. And I think thirty-four feet is, is gonna be difficult. And so my request, I don't think it's substantial. And I'm hopeful the board can allow us to move along to the next steps of the additional acquisitions.
Question going back two weeks. How did we structure the variance for the wall of the property at 181 with the jog in it? We had some fairly specific numbers around that, where it was this much for a third or something, and then, you know...
We used the dimensions on the plan?
Right.
And, and conditioned it that the seven point six-five was for, I don't remember what the distance was, but for that distance? And then from the, the door to the front of the garage, I think it was thirteen? I don't...
There were specific dimensions.
There was specific for the, for the house plan.
They were given, as far as lengths that were going to be.
And we did that because it made the house look narrower from the ground, so it was more...
Right, it wasn't seven point six-five for the whole wall of the house, it was just for...
It was limited to the thirty-two and layer feet of the side wall on the southwestern portion of the house.
The seven point six-five?
Yes.
Thirty-two feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, John, that's why I asked you about how, how, how much that jog stepped back, because the other one, we had a specific dimension in mind, and it made the house look, appear, you know, more uniformity with the others down the street. I, I have an opinion about the roof height. Different styles of roofs have different masses, and we do average roof height. In other words, picture this, if you do a big gable roof and you take an average height, the volume of roof above that is much greater than a hip roof. In other words, a hip roof's like a pyramid. It's just the very top peak that's much less volume than a full gable roof.
Right.
That's why I made that comment. And I tried to reference that one that we approved on Glenn Edith, because he showed that house with a gable roof, and it looked like a monster. It was just huge. Then he showed it with a flat roof, it looked like a different house. I mean, even though the average was the same, the full gable roof made it look much more voluminous, you know, much more of a presence. So I don't think we've ever, we've ever made a hip roof on a house a condition, but that's something to think about, because the amount of roof that's going above that is just the, just the peak of the pyramid, so to speak.
Well, that's why I cut last week the application.
It has a lot of awesome to it. Even though it's a lower, even though it's a lower average, it has more volume than a hip roof would have.
That's right.
That's my, you know, that's my experience.
No, I know.
Well, and the other thing, the applicant from last week also provided the average height, but they also provided the max height. Because I understand it's an average, but still knowing what that tippy-top point is, is helpful to, to get a feel for just how much of a presence the roof is going to have, or the house is going to have.
Can we condition, that this be a hip roof?
Well, hip roof.
We were designing a house for it.
I don't know if we can find that house.
We've never done that. I mean, we've, you know what it is? And that's why I asked you if you had a plan, because we always usually reference a plan. In other words, the one that we approved last meeting, we actually referenced the plan and so on and so forth, and the specific dimensions and so on. It kinda leaves things up in the air a little bit, and we hate to keep tabling applications time and time and time again. Let me just do this.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yeah, John?
Is the...
Is the, is Mr. Kashani, the applicant, willing to stipulate to a hip roof before we determine whether or not we can make a condition?
Do you agree with John?
Yeah, I think if it would please the board, I think that's a great compromise for everybody.
Sure.
So, yes, counsel, I would allow stipulation, I'd be willing to stip, to take it further, I'd be willing to do a gable at 34 or a hip at 36. And we all know that the hip is much more expensive to build, so if I can work it with 34, I'm going to make 34.
Make more there.
If I can meet it with a hip. Am I correct, Mr. Chairman?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and if we actually need that volume and that elevation, then I would not be opposed to this board making a stipulation that above 34, a hip would be required. And I think that would be a reasonable request of the board.
Okay.
Okay, well, I've never done a variance that way either, but let's try to nail down the footprint a little bit more so that we can maybe put a go on this. We've got the 181 was a 7.65 for a length of 32 feet on the west wall in this instance. What I'm thinking here, and to minimize the impact to the Gaskins to the east, that we would want to have the 32-foot at 7.65 on the east wall, and then the remainder of the distance be at 11 feet going back, and then you've got your 5-foot on each side for that shared access to the backyards. Is that workable? Where are those dimensions coming from?
I'm astonished that that would be brought up because we heard the standards were to be, you know, closer on the east side.
Well, I.
I think now that the Morelles have opted for the 7.65, I don't think they any longer need an easement on my property, nor would I need an easement on your property. So I think that's going to be a fallout. I'm also, well, I'm not even sure that Mrs. Gaskin is allowed to have her blacktop driveway right on our shared lot line.
It depends. At one point in history, the town code did allow that, but it's since been changed.
Not since 2012.
Yeah, I don't recall when the change was actually made, but now it's 5 feet.
Yeah, we looked into that, unfortunately.
They could drive in without a permit while coming for a variance.
So I really, look, if we can work this fine, if we can't, I'm just going to, you know, scrap this idea, let somebody else figure out what to do.
Well, I guess.
I don't think I've been workable, I don't think I'm asking for anything substantial. And if the board is willing, I would hope that you would go ahead and call a roll.
I guess, well, we need to have something to call a roll on.
You're asking for 7.65, and I'm promising a hip roof, it exceeds 34 feet, because I'm asking for 36, because I believe that's going to be the elevation that's going to allow this house to be done. And again, I've mentioned, no other house has been built that has conformed with the new standards. Is that the right word? Standards?
With respect to the E C standards.
Yes.
Well, zoning and D E C are two different, two different issues, but I guess the board, I think the question, I think we've hammered out that roof issue to some degree.
Well, initially, the applicant amended their application at 34 feet of height, and then through the conversation, now it's 36 feet in height?
Well, what he's asking, he'll do 34 with a gable roof, 36 if he goes with a hip roof. So with the idea being a hip roof, it actually looks like less volume than a gable roof. It's all aesthetics, really. And as counsel said, we, you know, we'd have to word that pretty carefully into our, you know, into our, you know, whatever, whatever we decide as far as our motion to grant.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, John.
I just want to be clear from where we started with the agenda. So the agenda, let me just go back to it here. Item B, like Baker, that is now modified, at least from the applicant's standpoint, that he's at 35 feet rather than 43.
He decided to stay with the 43 feet because we weren't advertising for the 35.
All right, and then C, isn't Charlie, is now 7.65 rather than 5?
On the west side setback, yes, on the west side. He's going to stick with the 5-foot on either side.
So that's less, is correct?
That would be fine, because he's asking for less of the variance on that side.
Correct, okay. All right, so the only modification then, at the end of the day, is D, like David, but again, both of those are less as well. 36 versus 34.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah. I guess, well, let me do this first. We haven't had any calls, so I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. Let's handle the height issue first, because there's two distinct, distinctly different items here. We're looking at a setback variance and a height variance. The front setback variance is a no-brainer, we got to allow that because we did all the way down the street, so.
And I think the side.
You were questioning the height issue, John.
I was just asking for a clarification, because everything's nuanced.
Do you agree that the hip roof has less, less volume than a gable coming out to the front?
Oh, yes.
So I think, I think from, when you're driving down the road, the hip roof looks lower than a gable roof, even though it's higher, it looks lower because it has less volume. And what we're worried about is aesthetics and that whole row of homes there, you know, I think that's important.
Yeah, and we're also, to a large extent, looking at shading of the neighborhood properties by a large roof where the hip roof, or even a roof that's got the center line away from the sides, is going to do less shading of the neighboring properties and so on. As we've discussed, you know, 34-foot with a gable, 36-foot with a hip, I don't have a big issue with that.
So we could pretty much put that height issue to rest if we worded our motion accordingly, okay?
I agree.
Okay, now let's go.
I would like to say something about the height. I mean, this is, and you have some experience on boards, so you understand what I'm about to say. We've granted a variance for 34 feet. That's the maximum height that we've granted so far.
Correct.
If we grant this variance of 36 feet, somewhere down the road, there's going to be an applicant that's going to make the same exact argument that you're making now for 37 or 38 feet. At some point in time, we have to make a determination that this is it, this is as high as we're going to go, because I understand exactly what you're saying, and I agree with you. But at 34 feet, now you're making an argument for 36 feet, someone, somewhere in the future is going to be, they're going to make a same argument for 38 feet. So at some point in time, we have to say, we have to draw the line and say, and I'm not saying you're wrong, I understand exactly what you're saying, I'm in construction too, but we have to make some type of statement to say, 34 feet is it? On average, 36 feet is it an average? I don't know when we're going to do that, but it's before us now.
Well, yeah, at the same time, the code is actually 30 feet, so that's the stake in the ground, and then every application is viewed on its own merits. So the fact that we're saying 36 with a hip roof and 34 average with a gable roof, I think that's pretty clear, because we can always go back to the code and say, no, we're not doing this because it's excessive.
Well, the issue is, in order to make this stipulation, if 36 feet has to be a gable roof on every applicant from this point on?
Well, Bob, the difference here on this particular site is the flood plain, and all these homes have garage unders, so they're really three-story homes, not two-story homes, so I think that requires a little bit more height than I think. You know, if you build a garage under with, you can't even build a ranch, a ranch home would only be a thousand square, be a tiny little house.
No, I.
So it's really a three-story, like in Florida, along the ocean, they raise all those houses way up there.
I understand.
And the code along the ocean is probably different than.
I'm just saying, as, when we grant a variance, we set a precedent for that area. So every time we exceed the variance that we've given once before, we've now established a new line in the sand. And the argument can be made that, well, you, I mean, you're making the same argument with your neighbor, and I agree with everything you're saying, but you're establishing, well, you did this for my neighbor, you know, I'm not asking for anything more but two more feet on the roof line. So.
And I'll do respect, and I know you weren't at the last meeting, but I did some lengthy, I foiled information, because I'm with you, and we all come from the same school. If you're in construction, you look at what's been done in the past, and you try to build from that. And initially, and maybe it was my mistake, I had oodles and oodles and oodles of requests for 1.5 feet, and they were graciously given, and some, 1.5 on one side and 3 feet on the other, and the board, not necessarily these folks, but these variances that were given. And so when you bring up that great point, how do you, as a board, say it's okay for this one, but it's not okay for that one? Because in most of my requests I've made, all these items I'm requesting was okay for somebody else, but I was crucified for asking for twice the amount of setback that's been given in the past. So I'm sure we're all trying to do our best here, and the benefit to the town is we're going to develop lots that have been sitting for years.
Yeah, and we do look at every project on its own merit. But we have to, we have to try to rely on what we've done in the past. I mean, it's not always, it's not always that easy.
A lot of, we look at every application fresh, and a lot of the homes that were too close to the lot line with pre-existing, with the pre-existing walls that were too close, they wanted to rebuild and so on and so forth, there was a lot of, a lot of those people couldn't move much.
Especially.
The wall was never going to build on an existing foundation and so on.
The 40-foot wall, 200-foot road for 100, Lake Road, all brand-new construction, and less than 5-foot side setbacks.
A lot of them stayed within the frame of the existing footprint.
Yes, sir, John. John?
So, right, thank you. You know, look, as you began and alluded to, each one of these applications, of course, are considered independently, and they have to be. Precedent is a factor, albeit an important factor, but it doesn't prevent an application from being decided one way or the other. So it's certainly a factor that needs to be considered, but independent, each application has to be considered on its own merits. And the other thing I would suggest is, or you're not going to be able to get to a vote on this this evening, is now that the public hearing is closed, Mr. Kashani is going to be given ample opportunity to make his application, and we thought all of the arguments or discussions by the board, but I think at some point the applicant has to be ended their application so that the board can have a conversation amongst itself before it votes.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so I hear you, Bob. I, the only rationale I had for the higher height is if you modified the design of the roof to give it less volume, okay? The 34 would be with a gable, okay? And I understand exactly what you're saying, because we always look back. Okay, what do we do? How do we maintain consistency and so on? So let's tackle the side setback. The only difference is the amount that's going to be at 7.65 is what I see.
And what is that amount?
100% versus 32 feet, I guess.
Well, not 100%, he's going to step it back somewhat, but he doesn't have an exact dimension, so that's the only issue, really. Do we tackle, do we put a dimension on that, or?
Well, we had a dimension on the last one where we granted 7.65 for 32 feet, and then 11-foot for everything beyond that, so, yeah. This applicant is requesting 50-foot length on the west side of the wall.
Could agree with that.
So this applicant is requesting a 50-foot length on the west side of the wall.
50, yeah.
That's based on McManaman drew a drawing, you know, 1230-01, dated August 18th, 2012.
So I guess I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the members what they feel is reasonable. Something, I want to hear something we could pass, something we could live with. And if that 7.65 for the 50 feet is acceptable, that's what we'll make the motion on, but I want to, I want to bring the discussion back to the board, and I want to hear what your thoughts are before we go that far.
Well, my thoughts are, in fact, I want to move this as far from the Gaskins' existing house as possible, because we put a fair number of conditions on that property in order to bring it into something that was reasonable. So I'd almost like to see it reversed, which is eminently possible, because we don't even have a design yet. I'd also like to have some requirement that is a data point, you know, dimensions that say, okay, it's going to be 7.65 for 32 feet, and the remainder, I'm not even going to say 50 feet, because you may want to make it a little bit longer because it's narrower, so you get similar square footage. A, B, and D, D is presented, I don't have issues with. I just want to nail down the footprint well enough so that when these guys come in with the, you know, to go back and make a design, they know what they need, and they don't have to come back again because something's not going to fit. If there are constraints involved, then they, then we can have a design within those constraints. It will, you know, match what's being done at 181 and what was done on the Gaskin property, so it's, you know, the best we can do under the circumstances of a pre-existing 40-foot wide lot.
You're correct.
I tend, I'm not sure. I tend to lean towards Eric's comments, just because we did tie the hands of the Gaskins so badly when they rebuilt their house. But now the applicant has come back and followed the pattern, I just, my only concern is that not having a picture of, I understand we don't get a picture of the house because you have to design it, but not having a floor, just an exterior dimension to reference so that the house doesn't suddenly become, you know, 100 feet long because it's narrower, and now we've just obscured the view of everybody else that lives on that side of the bay. I'm just, I'm, it's directionally correct, but the height certainly makes sense. sense with the two different roof proposals and the two different heights. I, I just, I'm struggling with how to, to tie it up in a neat package that, that the board doesn't get questioned two years from now with, well, how come you didn't see that coming? And, do you see what I mean?
Would it help, does this so, or, or themselves?
Just this.
With the planning or square footage, would you, would it help if the board said, we, we don't, not, I mean, because we've got a lot of houses, twenty-eight hundred, twenty-seven hundred, you know, square feet in, in this area? Would you like to get, because I understand, I'm asking for seven point six-five feet.
Mr. Cascianni, could you just step back a little bit, I'm sorry?
This is Vol, Vol, I, I understand. And, and I, again, it's gotta be the most difficult thing, being a board member, is, you know, what standards you had Gaskins in years ago and, you know, I, 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 I truly understand. Um, I think what I'm asking for is not outrageous. Um, the size of the home, I think we're flirting with twenty-four or twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, this is by no means ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. This is probably where we are today is probably sixteen percent lot coverage. So we can talk about jogs all over, but sixteen percent lot coverage, where this board has given variances to homes that already exceeded the thirty-three percent, thus noting forty percent, forty-seven percent lot coverage.
I'm not disagreeing.
So, I, you know, how do you stay within these standards?
I'm just trying, I'm trying to know what I'm approving. I'm, we're going to give you permission to build.
Don't let me build thirty-three percent lot coverage.
No, I, I understand that, but, but what we've done with all of the other houses up and down Lake Road is try to also preserve the view of the other neighbors because otherwise why would you want to live on the bay if you don't get to see it? So I, I appreciate what you've done. It would have been very helpful to have that information before the meeting so that we would have just an outline drawing of it's, it's going to be fifty-six feet or it's going to be seventy-six feet, you know? And, and I keeping roughly the fifty-six feet or is it going to grow? And then the, the step, you know, is the step going to be six feet? Is it going to be sixteen feet? Is it, just, you know, as we're trying to condition it, we're trying to ramp it up so that we don't, and, and not saying that, that you would look for the loophole and, and make something ridiculous because we know that you don't do that as a builder, but, but just, you know, trying to, to just put everything in a neat little package with a bow on it and knowing what that package looks like.
The issue is.
I'm sorry, John.
The issue is we're not establishing a, uh, a side setback for the entire lot. We're establishing a side setback for the building that you're proposing to build. So we need those dimensions and the length of the building, uh, where those jogs are, uh, what the setback of those jogs would be. We're establishing that footprint of that building that you're proposing to build. We're not, forget about our previous variances, we're done with those, okay? Let's establish the setback for the building and get some lengths and dimensions of the building so the board can give you a resolution this evening. Now, interesting. Your only public, uh, input that we got regarding any of this, any of the project was just for the side setback on the, um.
East side.
East side.
Well, this is.
Right?
That's very good.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I think, um, Schneider actually suggested that the, um, project could potentially be mirrored, so the, the jog would be on the, uh, east side. And then the, the letter that was written to us actually suggested a, a side setback between eight and eleven feet. And I think if we, if we were able to grant a seven point six variance on that side, on the side of that neighbor, and I, I don't see any, I'm, I'm, to all suggestions, I don't see a, a huge obstacle in going that route, but I don't want to tell you how to build that case.
Well, you asked a very good question. If I could answer, and it's a very good question, and thanks for giving me that opportunity. If I go the seven point six-five feet on that one side, clearly the door will occur on that side. Um, on the Gaskin side, I think we've already established, they have illegally put their driveway right on my lot line.
That's, that's a drop that I have to talk about.
So I'm faced, you know, now you might be asking me, are you willing to put your front door?
To the east.
On the side of where those people are parking their cars? And I've already, in that presentation last week, showed a mirage of radical car parking amongst all the places along there. Um, there's no open views to the bay. They are jammed with cars and boats and jet skis and, and, you know, not to go backwards, but I'm proposing keeping these sides open.
Yeah.
But it's a great idea, but I think that the door.
Very narrow lots down there.
I, I know it.
We heard it into this just about every deal.
I know it, I understand.
John, I guess what he's asking, would you flip the plan, reverse it or not?
I, I don't think it would be sensible, Barry. I do think that, that the, okay, let me, as, as, let me, let me.
Do, does it need to be flipped? Or could you just shift it so that the five feet is on the west side and the seven point six-five is on the east side?
That's another, another.
Which then gives you more space from that driveway away from.
Yeah.
But, but keeping your front door away from it, which is exactly what you asked for originally with the easement between the two houses.
Well, I've always asked for five feet on the east side. And the author of the letter that was read, um, asked me in the very first meeting, could I please maintain at least four feet? So I don't know how I went from four and I agreed to five. And now she's asking for a seven point, or maybe ten, or maybe twelve.
The letter actually said eight to eleven.
Right, right. She's utilizing the benefit of the other side.
John, John, let me, let me make a suggestion. Um, it's actually, it looks like a six-foot jog. The front door area is six feet wide, all right? Because you got, uh, because the garage is twenty-two and inches and then the overall house is twenty-nine and two, so it looks like about six feet, which gives you thirteen point six-five from the property line, which is a good thing because the one we granted was eleven feet.
However, however, the garage would have to be substantial for two cars. So that six feet will no longer work.
Okay, so this plan I'm looking at's not, not going to be the, the, the plan we.
That was the side plan that was.
Well, I, I actually have a.
Looked at two weeks ago.
Like a concept of a house plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also had the jog, you know, in, in the front of the side.
Okay, so it's a four-foot jog.
Maybe three.
Yeah, but the front, the front door won't fit a three-foot.
Could I, could I interject here? Um, the, our attorney has already said that this discussion needs to be back amongst the board for the board to discuss this.
Good point.
And, and to come, and, and we're just going around, I don't care if Gaskins built a driveway without a permit. That's a matter of litigation between the Gaskins and the town. I don't care what Marjorie Gaskins said when you first met with her. She's presented a letter and the, and, and her, and we're trying to minimize that. Now, at this point, I don't want to hear any more discussion. I would say quite plainly and frankly that the board discussed this and decided amongst themselves because there's no point in hashing all this over for the fifth time in three months.
I, I agree. So, we're looking at the side setback. I, would help the previous applicant that got the variance was the amount of larger side setback they had. Now, if you make the garage wider, I, I don't think you can go with a three-foot jog, but even if you want with three, we have about eleven feet, which is similar to what they had. The question is, could you give us more at eleven feet? Could you design a house?
I'm not, I, I don't even want that discussed anymore. We put the plan in, we give them an envelope, they either build to it or they come back for more variances.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a plan.
I, no, I'm saying we give them a footprint.
Well, that's, that's of course an option. We could, we could come up with something and, and, and see if they could design to it. That's an option. Actually, we could make it exactly the same as what the other folks had.
That would probably be the easiest way.
And then the height variance, we already discussed.
I think their, their length of the building is a little less than what is being used with this applicant.
Well, we could scale it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the paperwork for last, the last meeting's uh, application.
For what, one eighty-one?
Right.
One eighty-one, yeah, yeah. I didn't put that with me.
I might have it.
Do you have it, Bob?
I might.
Okay. I don't remember how many feet that was, but there, there again, we had a plan to ref, to reference.
Well, we do know it was thirty-two feet at seven point six-five to the lot line and the remainder was at eleven feet. So we said thirty-five.
Use the thirty, thirty-five feet, thirty-two feet, thirty-five feet, wherever it was.
Talking about sixty feet.
How deep was that house? Do you have?
Was sixty feet.
Yeah, and this house is fifty-six feet.
Twenty-seven feet. So, so thirty-five foot scales pretty well if we say that. And, and then the remainder at eleven foot from the lot line on the east side of the property, um, five foot on the west side of the property and, uh, they're your side setbacks.
What we're thinking then is to set up, uh, set up the side setbacks as to what's acceptable to the board, make the height variance, what's acceptable to the board.
Forty, forty-three foot from the right of way.
Forty-three foot.
Sixty foot maximum depth.
Then the applicant, uh, should go to his architect and try to design something that fits in that footprint.
Right, because we don't have anything else. We'll just end up tabling this.
Because, because we don't have a plan.
Right.
Trent, do you agree with that as well? I, I.
With what we have to work with, I don't know that we can do anything differently.
Otherwise he walks away with no variances whatsoever.
Yeah, let's establish a building envelope as long as he builds his structure within that building envelope to that specific height. That's how we could do this.
Okay, Bob?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. All right, um, let me, um, well, pursuant to section six seventeen point four of the environmental code, excuse me, six seventeen point five of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The sole findings of fact will be identical to one eighty-one pretty much, right?
Exactly. Um, um, yeah, I don't really see anything that would be different.
We adopt that, adopt the finding of facts for the, for one eighty-one?
Yeah, for, for house number one eighty-one. So the findings of fact would be, let's adopt those findings of fact, uh, for this application. Um, now, we've got to be careful how we word the motion. Um, does somebody want to do that or I, I can handle it if you like?
That, I can, you can.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to grant area variances at one eighty-five Lake Road for the applicant John Cascianni. Variances to the following. A, a lot size of seventy-nine hundred square feet where eighteen thousand square feet is required, a front setback of forty-three feet where seventy feet is required, a side setback of five foot on the west side of the property, and a side setback of seven point six-five feet on the east side of the property. That setback being no longer than thirty-five foot of the overall length. The remainder of the setback to incorporate a building up to but not exceeding sixty feet in length from the front setback to be eleven foot. The building height will be, uh, be an average of thirty-four foot for, uh.
Gable.
Gable roof and thirty-six foot for a hip roof. Associated with the construction of a three-story family dwelling on a point one nine acre parcel having SBL number zero six three point zero nine dash one dash fifty-three located in a waterfront development district under section twenty-five dash twenty-two of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
Anybody have any, I think it's pretty well worded.
And we included the lot size in it as well?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
I, a second.
Yeah, hold on, hold for one sec, yes, yes, counsel.
So with respect to, uh, item one B of the David Termsor Snyder's application, it should be noted that that condition is, will be consent of the applicant, that being the building height at thirty-four, foot thirty-six foot with a gable and hip roof, roof sole respectively.
Okay, so we'll make that part of the motion. So thirty-four foot with a gable roof, um, and thirty-six with a hip style roof.
As, as agreed to by the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Catherine?
Okay, Mr. Brum, uh, sorry.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. De Noto?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Volle?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Um, you have your variance, hopefully, John, you could design a house that fits into that footprint.
Did you flip the house?
No.
No, well, we, we specified which side this, which, which side has to be the five-foot setback and which side is, that's up to you.
Yeah, you've got an envelope, build it however you want.
I'm going to just withdraw the application. Do you already take a vote?
Yeah.
Well, the variance have been granted.
Granted.
Why don't you, why don't you, you've got the variances, try, try and make it work, try and make it work.
I'll try to make it work.
Okay. Now, a couple of motions, obviously you need.
Do we, do we, do we condition that on two years or i- if it expires in a year?
Well, correct. Well, you'd have to.
I don't know, we've never done that before.
So go ahead, Mark, counsel.
With, with, with respect to the term of the approval, what I would recommend is that the term stay at one year. However, this board can vote tonight to recommend that the term be extended for one year if needed.
So that'd be two years, two years total?
Right, so what I, what I, right, so what I would suggest is that the applicant simply notify the, uh, the board, uh, you know, thirty or sixty days in advance of the expiration so it can be an agenda item, but I would suggest this evening, if all of you feel strongly, I'm going to up the extension that is recommended by the board tonight, uh, that gets in any substantial change in circumstances, that that extension should be granted.
Okay, so we make a motion to extend that for one year?
Correct.
Okay, that's a good idea because it is a, it is a pretty prolonged process getting the permits. Uh, so I'll make a motion that we extend the, uh, this variance granted tonight for period of one year. So it's two years total and then beyond that, he'd have to come back to the board for, for additional extensions if there's no substantial changes. Does that make sense?
Okay, maybe I misunderstood what John said. I thought we could only approve it for a year, but we could recommend that it can be extended for another year. I know we've had other applicants come back before the variances have expired to extend it for another year. We've done that previously.
Correct.
Because I thought we weren't allowed.
Indicating on the record, the, the board unanimously recommends that the extension be granted.
Okay, so it's a recommendation, recommendation rather than, rather than a, a motion to make it a one-year extension at this point. Okay. Let me modify my, let me modify my motion to reflect that we recommend that it be granted if there's no substantial modifications to the plan. Okay? Is that, that adequate, John?
You got a, you need a second?
Okay. We have a second.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Okay, now, as I was saying, obviously, you need the E.C. permit, various permits and so on, and so forth. So everything's conditional on all, all the requisite permits from all the government agencies, so. Good luck, good luck with it, and, um, I, I think, I think you could make that work, John. All right, yeah. All right, have a good night.
Good inclusion. The house that was on one eighty-five, for the record, was one point five feet from the guesting lot. I guess she does have friends on the board.
Well, we, we run these things all the time, and what we try to do is improve, when things get to be rebuilt, we try and improve the situation.
But as, as you were saying, this will be better than it was, so win-win. It'll be better than it was. I mean, usually.
Now, we're, 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 thank you for your questions. And if, I'll probably hit the minutes, because I don't even know what was approved, but I'm not sure that's, I can't even look it forward.
We approved, we approved everything that, that was, that, that, everything in addition to, we just added the side setback, and we put it on, on the side, on the guesting side, not on the other side.
Well, yeah, there's no point in discussing. Okay, we're, we're all set? All right, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, this, now, we're on to the first scheduled matter. Now, it's twenty-three West Over Drive fence posts. So, Trent, if you could read that into the record, please.
Yes. Twenty-three West Over Drive fence posts. Located at twenty-three West Over Drive, applicant Kevin Fuller is requesting an area variance to allow an eight-foot long decorative arch over an existing code compliant fence gate in a point two-one acre parcel having SBL number zero seven nine point one six dash one dash three four. Located in an MHR medium high residential district under section two-two-five dash seven of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. I'm Kevin Fuller, twenty-three West Over Drive.
So tell us about what brings you here tonight.
Well, I'm hoping that the decorative arch over my fence gate might be a little less time consuming than the first item was. Um, it's basically three feet above the top of a five-foot fence.
Okay, so this is all about the entrance, that the fence itself, but the entrance, because your fence is far enough off the line and so on and so forth.
Correct.
Now, this is, it's an interesting neighborhood.
Thank you.
Some of the setbacks are like a couple of feet, uh, that, that was a, almost like a semi-detached townhouse project. And my, you were, you were.
Well, initially, it came in as a townhouse project, and then they started their construction. And if memory serves me correctly, one of the definitions of a townhouse was having a common wall and all the, uh, units had a common wall, and that's where the brick wall came in, and it was solutioned by the, uh, uh, contractor or developer, uh, which met the definitions, and the town attorney said, meets definition, yeah, permit it.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting neighborhood. And now, the side, you, you're, you're, you're within your rights to have the five-foot fence where it is, because you're far enough off the property lines. And the building inspector questioned the height of the posts at the entry gate, correct?
Correct.
And you, you indicated you might create a pergola there at some point in time, right?
Correct.
Okay. I would contend that if that's a structure, you're still far enough from the lot line. Say it's not part of the fence, say it's a structure, you're still more than, it's ten-foot minimum setback, and you're more than ten feet from the line. So even if it is a structure, you're still far enough, your setback's far enough.
Right, and I've even spoken to Rod about the potential for a pergola or an arbor there, which was the reason for using those posts integrated with the piers that were part of the fence. And, um, we've already had that discussion.
I understand what Rod Potter was looking at. I understand exactly what, um, I don't know. Did you all take a look at the pro- property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a huge side yard too, by the way, because of the easements that are there.
Yeah, especially in that neighborhood, like you were saying.
Yeah, and then the next house is two feet away.
There's thirty feet between us.
I think this is, um, I don't know if this is a, a variance or a clarification of.
There's another issue, I believe there's a fifty-foot buffer requirement for MHR district, and a portion of the fence goes within that buffer. I don't have, I just handed my code book to Josh, can you look at that?
Today, actually. I don't see, I don't see where we have to grant a variance for this. Unless I'm missing something.
Well, it's just the excessive height of the two posts.
Yeah. It be- it becomes part of the fence and.
Right.
Yeah, it's partisan, that's why it's attached to these posts.
That's right.
That's why you can't have an eight-foot fence.
But the fence, the fence doesn't, it doesn't go above the lower posts. I mean, there's no fence structure going to the top of the taller posts.
Right, the functional barrier is only fifty-eight inches. The decorative posts are just above the gate.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a gray area, but I can see where it could end up at, being called, you know, an eight-foot fence for that little segment.
Well, picture this, what if you had fence posts and then just separated those by a foot?
Bingo. Bingo. Yeah, that's, that's where it gets crazy.
So.
Or even immediately adjacent to it.
Well, that's almost like saying you attach your fence to the house, so your fence is twenty feet tall.
Right.
Yeah, that's just, that's another, I'm exaggerating, but, but the point is, and I, I understand where the building inspector's coming from, but if, if there was a pergola in place already. Now, did you, did you get permits?
I was asked for the permit for the fence yesterday. The, the, there was a slight mistake in our discussion about the deck last year when I was talking to him at length, that I was under the impression that anything under five feet inside the property line did not need a permit. I was corrected on that.
Okay. Well, I suppose, you know, if the board sees that it's not objectionable, you know, we could grant a variance on it, even though it is at some point going to become part of the house structure in the form of a pergola.
Okay, but now, now let's flip it around. If we grant a variance, how do we condition it so that we don't end up with an eight-foot fence on that? That has to be.
Yeah, it would have to be word, word carefully, of course.
Yeah.
This meeting is open to the public, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, our number is eight seventeen seven zero one one. What's kind, it's just, it's an interesting, interesting, uh, situation.
It is. Well, it could have been worse. It could have been a six-foot fence on the lot line with no permit.
Yeah, he's ten foot two off the lot, ten foot point two. Yes, you have the zoning board?
Hi, I'm calling about the, um, fence at twenty-three, uh, West Over Drive.
Yes, please go ahead. Oh, excuse me, I need, I need your name and address, please.
Um, Joyce Nichols Q C.
Twenty-five.
West Over Drive.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, my, my property is adjacent to, to, to the, um, twenty-three West Over Drive. Um, my side faces that fence. And that fence, I find very attractive, it's well-built, it's, um, top quality. Um, I think the person who did that did an excellent job, and people who've gone by the house and looked at it have fixed it. Oh, boy, I wish we could have something like that. So I think it's an asset to the neighborhood, I think it'll bring our values up.
Anything else?
Nope, I've just, you know, it's, I, I have to look at the fence and I find it attractive, and I think putting the pergola on it will even make it look better.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not even finished. It'll be standing next year.
Well, something we haven't seen before. I don't see a problem with it, but the, the thing, the thing that concerns me is how do we, how do we word a variance if we make such, if we grant such a variance? How do we word it so we don't all put ourselves up to a problem, uh, in the future? John, you have any suggestions?
Well, I, I'll tell you, um, I did not speak to the code enforcement officer, Mr. Potter, on this, and, and I'm just wondering uh, if it would make some sense to have that conversation. I, I don't, I don't know whether Josh chimed in, um, on this or not, but I, did he have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Potter to, uh, get us in cover? Or otherwise, this matter needed to be before the zoning board?
Uh, yes, I did. Unfortunately, the agenda had been prepared and sent out before I had a chance to adequately uh, evaluate this, because, uh, had it not went to print, I would not have brought it before this board.
So, Mr. Potter doesn't have a problem with it after that?
No, no, after we spoke about it, uh, he did not.
You know, with, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, what I might recommend is this. I, I would, I'd ask the applicant to table, I would, I would finish up all of our, um, uh, of our work regarding the application, and then I would table it. Allow, uh, Mr. Tussow and myself to, uh, uh, speak with Mr. Potter, and if ultimately, after a second or third look, we find that this could have been administratively handled without the board, uh, we can, uh, you know, you'll laterally move it off the table and, and resolve it directly with the applicant. On the alternative, if it should be before the board, at least all the housekeeping matters are completed, and it could return to the agenda simply for a vote.
Okay, excellent, thank you. I, uh, I think that, I think that makes sense. Why don't we, um, why don't we go through the standards and everything that we need to do, and we'll do seeker and so on, as John suggested. We'll go through all our housekeeping work, and then, um, we'll see if, uh, Mr. Potter and the applicant could, uh, come to a resolution where, where the town's satisfied, all right? And what we'll do is, we'll table this anyway, so that if Rod says you need to come back to this board for the variance, I don't think he will, but if he does, we'll be in, in good shape to do that, all right? Okay, so, uh, let's see, pursuant to, uh, section six seventeen point five of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does somebody want to look through the standards? Oh, excuse me, one second, let me, uh, let me just close the public portion of the meeting before we move on. Bring it back to the board.
Okay, standards, um, no undesirable change in the essential character of the neighborhood. We've, the fence itself is actually permitted by code. The only thing in question here is two eight-foot posts, which are minimal, so that's not going to, um, change the neighborhood. And, um, neighbors seem to be, well, one's against, one's, one's in favor, but that's all right. No other remedy, um, now, they can't move the fence, the only other remedy would be to remove the posts. Um, since we've heard that we're going to have a pergola constructed between the posts and the house. That wouldn't be preferable, we'd just end up with the posts back eventually, anyway. Requested variance is not substantial. It probably is, because it's an eight-foot post where it should be, you know, by five and a half. But, um, I, I don't know what else to say about that. Physical or environmental conditions agreed, there's no adverse physical or environmental issues being created by this. Not self-created, uh, yeah, definitely the eight-foot posts are self-created, but it's, uh, miniscule. And in, in that regard, because of the overall area of the fence itself, and you've got a couple of four-foot, or four-inch, excuse me, wide posts, so.
So, any other discussion?
I mentioned the buffer, the district buffer. Uh, yeah, that's true, right, looking at the map, there probably is a few feet of that fence that's inside the buffer. Yeah. Yeah, it's located on the west side.
Can you tell it from the map?
Yeah, it's thirty and a half feet from the right of way, and then, uh, um, twenty-one feet for the garage itself overall, so the buffer's fifty feet, so some part of that has to be in the buffer.
No, is that a?
Fifty feet from the road?
Fifty feet from the western property line.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that so that I could hear it?
Okay, Don, I missed it too, then. There's a district buffer for townhouses of fifty feet, which is not to be occupied.
Off the word away.
No.
There's a word away behind it, I mean.
No, there's a strip of land between Harmony Station, I believe that's what you're referring to? And, and this, and this backyard. Okay? And when this project was built, there was a district buffer separating, uh, well, required by town code of fifty feet on the outer perimeter of that, uh, development.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Have we talked to them?
And that would fall on the western side of this property.
Between this house and the twenty-five, the most building over?
Harmony Station Road.
And Harmony Station. Yeah.
You know how, how, in the town, so there is a hundred-foot buffer between residential and commercial? This is a fifty-foot buffer between.
Yeah.
So I've got a forty-foot wide utility easement that's, and it would have ten feet.
Yeah, we don't really have the dimension to the duck.
Doesn't it?
Well, there's a forty-foot buffer, a forty-foot easement behind the house, and then there's the distance from that easement line to Harmony Station. Because there's a, there is a forever wild between Harmony Station and our backyard.
Yeah.
That's way more than fifty feet.
Do you, do you know what the setback is to your deck from, from your real property line?
Uh, well, we have, we have to stay within the easement line, and it's.
Well, the easement's forty feet, you're, you're well outside of that.
Our, the back of our deck is four feet from the easement line that starts.
So it is in the buffer somewhat. Now, so that's, that, that's a, uh, something that would require a variance as well, but that's not part of this application. See, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be aware of that district buffer, because we weren't, without studying the original subdivision plan and so on and so forth, and.
Well, it just showed up on this instrument, uh, survey also.
So, we've pretty much solved one problem and came up with another.
It sounds that way.
So.
Uh, then, yeah, I want Josh to check what the MHR, um, requirements are for townhouses. As far as district buffer.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to do anyways. What, what counsel suggested, and I, and I think it's a great idea, why don't you request to table? They'll give us time to research the other issue as well. And I think you could work out that entryway with the building inspector. And if you can't, if he still wants you to come back here for a variance, we've already done all the legwork for that. In the meantime, maybe, Josh, you could check that, uh, the buffer issue with the deck and so on, all right? Because that wasn't part of this original application anyways, all right?
Yeah, it certainly wasn't any part of the discussion on the deck permit either.
So you want to request, want to request table that?
I request table.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this until the, uh, next, which is, where's the next, I don't have the calendar. I don't have the calendar.
I just stuck it to my seat.
January, January 12th, right? If I got that right? Yeah, so applicant makes a request, I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to, to table this application, January 12th, if he needs to return, all right? I'll go ahead a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, members.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I need to take a little quick for the next case, and I have to introduce myself anyways.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 410 Whiting Road. You can read that in, please, Karen.
Yes. 410 Whiting Road, located at 410 Whiting Road, applicant Ron Bracolo is requesting an area variance to allow an average lot width of 205 feet or 250 feet as required, associated with the, with the creation of a proposed three-acre flag lot by subdividing an existing 6.85 acre parcel, having SBL number 049.03-1-33.1, located in a large lot, LL Large Lot Zoning District under section 225-12 of the Code of the Town Webster.
Okay, could you introduce yourself for the record?
McManleru Associates. Ron and Bracolo are here tonight. They, by the way, live at 406 Whiting Road, which is right next door, and they, they're the contract bndies for the three-acre parcel. And so, well, their, their goal is to preserve it. But in the future, they just wanted to make sure that it was a building lot. It could be a building lot. So they wanted to comply with zoning, and also, the protests were witnessed, deep hold by the Health Department. So other than that, we know it's a, it's a valid lot. But at this point, they don't have any intention whatsoever to, to develop it. Now, the, the existing owner, the DeFrancos, they wanted to maintain a ten-foot strip, walking strip back to the town, town park. So you'll see a little ten-foot strip along that side. And all of those factors, we've, DeFranco's lot, we've got 250 feet, so we've got something like forty-six feet, forty-six foot wide flag lot. There's an angle point in the front, so it added two numbers up, and it's about forty-six feet or something like that, or forty-seven. And all of those factors contribute to asking for the variance for the average lot width, 205 versus the 250. We comply with the three-acre zone, and, and Bracolo's here to answer any questions you might have of them, and, and of course, me.
Now, the lot gets wider as it goes toward the front?
Yes, it does. The, the existing parcel is narrow in the back, and then about 300 feet wide in the front.
Now, did you, did you toy with the numbers, if you moved that lot line forward, if you can get up closer to 250? If they're not, if they're not planning on building on it anyways, it's gonna be empty land, would it matter if that, because you have 3.87 acres on the lot one? You understand what I'm saying? If they move that up, it increases the average width?
The DeFrancos didn't want to sell any more than three acres. They didn't want to sell any more than that. That was the contributing, that's why it is where it is.
Well, the rear of that lot used to be wider, but the DeFrancos had actually sold the rear portion of that lot to the Gerber subdivision that the Bracolos live in, in order to be allowed to build those houses.
So he could comply.
So he could comply.
That's why there's an angle point in the, in the north line.
So they made the lot non-compliant by already selling off a portion of it, or the width of it non-compliant.
Exactly, exactly.
Gerber's to the north.
The code does not deal with the average lot width. It deals with the mean lot width.
How do I calculate that?
It's taking a, there's, there's a formula for it.
I know.
It's fairly complicated, but I generally advise the person to, for every 25 feet, take a measurement to a side property line at a right angle, including the front property line at the road, going all the way back to the rear property line. And depending on how many measurements taken every 25 feet at a right angle, that's your mean lot width.
Well, with a flag lot, you're at a big disadvantage, no?
Well, you are. You're still dealing with, I just want the correct number if we're gonna grant a variance, because the code does deal with a mean lot width, not an average lot width. Means different.
I misspoke.
Pardon me?
I misspoke.
Okay.
We took the lot width at the west end of the proposed lot, and the east end of the proposed lot, and halfway through, halfway across, that's the 205.
Because the mean's supposed to provide a representative sample of the lot width. Is that, is that, oh, you calculated that?
It is.
Okay. So you're, you're gonna stay with the 205?
Yeah.
Okay. It seems high, but. There again, I just, it's not gonna change the lot configuration at all. I just want the correct number.
No, I know. I understand.
Josh, do we have any, do we have any letters?
Yes, we did receive. All right. So we did receive a letter from Eric and Karen Schneider at 446 Whiting Road. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, please find the attached letter and documents in opposition to the granting of a variance for a substandard large lot at 410 Whiting Road, the Bracolo subdivision. This issue is confusing, as we have been told by Peg DeFranco, that this lot was purchased for them, or is being purchased. The letter from the consultant is confusing, because the Bracolos wished that the property not be developed. If that were the case, we would have expected that the lot simply be combined with the Bracolo's lot, and a single tax number be created. This does not seem to be the case. Here are the specific objections to this substandard lot. Essential character of the neighborhood. The zoning board has consistently denied variances in the large lot residential districts, especially in areas of open space, such as the Whiting Road Nature Preserve and Webster Park. This lot is in the area of the nature preserve and contiguous with Webster Park. The applicant also states that the width variance required is substantial. This is out of character with the neighborhood, as the zoning board has been careful to assure that all lots in the LRR district in this area have met the requirements. This was held to be the case by the zoning board when the Manuel Gerber subdivision requested a substandard lot to the north of 410 Whiting Road. That application was denied. The developer then had to barter for a part of the 410 Whiting Road property in return for the developer supplying county water to 410 Whiting Road, and the removal of an old barn at 410 Whiting Road, in order to have three lots that include the existing Bracolo home. No other remedy. There has been no discussion of other land that can be purchased to widen the lot. This is unlikely, given the large amount of property necessary to transfer, but no attempt and a discussion has been made. The tapering nature of the existing lot was known. Significance. The requested area variance is substantial, as noted by Mr. LaRue. The magnitude of the variance required was increased by the removal of the wedge of property transferred to the Gerber subdivision. It should also be noted that creating a buildable lot here is by no means required, given the substandard lot. Also, the creation of the lot two leaves the existing home at 410 Whiting Road on a substandard lot. That is because while the road furniture of the lot for the existing house is 250 feet wide, the lots do taper. All the lots on this side of Whiting Road do. So, the average lot width for the existing home will be below the 250 as required by code. That means a knock-on variance will be required when the existing house were to be sold, if the variance under consideration tonight were granted. Physical and environmental impacts. Concentrated runoff from the house gutters will impact a wetland area in the east of the property, and affect a wash that runs to the north into Webster Park. As the application notes in 13A, there are all wetlands involved. Not self-created. This application is totally self-created, as the necessity, the necessity of the variance is necessitated by the desire of the applicant to build on a substandard lot that was purchased, or has a contingent offer on, a lot that was slash is substandard at the time of transfer. Also, the lot to mention in question was reduced by the transfer of property from 410 Whiting to the Gerber subdivision, so that a, that three lots could be created there. This meets the definition of self-created. Summary. This variance does not meet the standards to an extent that it should be granted. The zoning board has been careful to ensure that all lots in the large lot district, especially those around open space, acquired by the town or county, have met all the requirements of the district. The creation of the substandard lot two of the Bracolo subdivision not only goes against this precedent, it has the effect to force a second variance for the existing house at 410 Whiting Road, prior to that house transferring ownership. There are other possible remedies that could be explored, but none have. That should not, however, necessitate a variance, as the issue of a substandard lot was known by the seller and the buyer prior to the variance application. The request by the applicant's admission is significant. That significance is exacerbated by the actions of the seller of the property when they deeded a part of the property to the three-home subdivision to the north of 410 Whiting Road. There will be physical and environmental impacts, as the house will be visible to people in Webster Park, and will also cause drainage into a wet area on the eastern part of the property. Finally, this request is entirely self-created. Kind regards, Eric and Karen Schneider. And there was also an attachment to that letter, a four-page summary of, of local zoning board of appeals statutory summary.
Now, I, I want to understand something. Now, Bracolos is R2A, correct?
They're, they're at 406. They're in lot, R2A. They live there.
Now, lot one and lot two, that you own the whole piece, R2A, lot one and lot two? Because I see different names on, on, on the map.
Lot one was a part of it, was a part of the NAP Gerber subdivision.
Okay.
And lot two B, R2B, was a, was also a part of it, and lot R2C was also a part of it. In 2015, March 10th, they received area variances for lot width. Not size, not area, not square area. They're still three acres, but they got a variance, they got variances for lot widths to create those lots. This is very much in keeping with what's going on in the neighborhood. This is a big lot. And our lots are, our lot that we're creating is bigger than any of the other lots to the north, width-wise.
Yeah, I don't recall, I do remember the variance for Gerber's, that was for area, not, not width. I don't recall what the width was. I, I don't know if you folks did.
I, I know we did not grant variances for less than three acres.
Yeah.
Which is, so they had to get the, the piece from the neighbor next door.
Would you like to see the map?
I don't, I've got it pulled up on GIS. I don't remember what the widths were. I do know that we've been reluctant in the large lot areas to grant anything that's been substandard, just because the town has been trying to preserve the character in the large lot areas.
Yeah, okay, I'll pass this down.
Now, a significant portion of the rear of the DeFranco lot is, I'll call it lowland. So it's, it's wet a lot of the year. That, there's a, a stretch along Whiting Road that runs to the back of most of those lots, that's a ravine that, that's wet. So, the entire lot is not, not usable for, for development.
Yeah, I, I.
My question was, if, if the object is to preserve that for, for yourselves, why not, why not just make it part of lot 2A, which then negates any, any variance required?
Yeah, I'll pass this map down, but I'm looking at four, I'm looking at four lots, and they're all substandard width, every one of them. You know, pass this down. They're all three acres, but they're all substandard.
I chose to advise the Bracolos not to combine them, for the other, you know, the three-acre lot, and to keep this separate, because it just gives them options in the future, maybe 20 years from now. We're up on the knoll before the, before the drop-off. We're not wet at all. Our perks were, had three holes that were 10, 11, and 11. So, as we're good?
Yes.
No wires?
Don, when, when you're done looking at that, let's, let Bob take a look at it. Stand by a little bit while we study the map a little.
This map indicates the zoning board issued lot width variances on March 10th, 19, oh, I'm sorry, 2015.
I noticed they're all substandard. I, I guess, my, my perspective, see, I, I didn't have, I didn't have the benefit of that map, so.
No, I understand.
I, I would like to, myself, I don't know about the other members of the board, but I'd like to study the variances granted in the past, to see what, what, what we've done in the past on those. I don't, some might have been before my time, and I know, I know Gerber came in, I remember that meeting, and it was for the size of lot, not the width, I don't think. But I, I don't remember the specifics of that.
Well, initially, it was for the size.
Yeah, because he had, and he purchased a silver property.
To try to, to increase the mean lot width for those lots.
And I know they played.
But in his initial application, he was not able to meet a size requirement.
Right, he couldn't meet the size requirement.
That's right. Then he came back. Then he came back, the table came back and said, we've arranged to purchase some additional property.
That's right.
And they rearranged the lots, I don't remember how many times there before the
board rearranging the sizes to make them closer to conformance.
That's right.
And, and one of the things that the board had continued to press is to, you know, find, find a means with other property that you can purchase to, to make it more compatible. There, there's, you know, it's only ten feet, but there is more width available that, you know, takes, takes away from the DeFrancos being able to walk to Webster Park, but you gotta kind of pick your battles too.
Yeah, for the north, I don't think what you do if you take footage from that particular property, make that even narrower, it's already substandard, and width, and width.
I'm sorry?
Well- To the north. Well, there's, I'm looking, where, where would they purchase more property from?
There's, there's a ten-foot strip on the south side that continues to be part of Lot one.
That's correct.
That could be ten feet wider on Lot two and make that less non-conformant.
What's the purpose of that?
The purpose of it is they wanted to be able to walk to the park.
Have they considered easement? I, I, I like the ownership thing, but an easement is always an option. This way, if you own it, you control it.
You own it, you control it, exactly right.
Yeah.
And remember that this lot, right now that we're creating, is, is wider than the lots on the map for the NAP Gerber subdivision.
Could you step off the mic, please? I'm Ron Bacollos. We live in the lot that is adjacent to the north to the lot that we are discussing at this point, which is basically a part of the DeFranco lot. Our lot is an average of about a hundred and fifty feet wide, and it was created with the Gerber subdivision, three lots, of which none of those, as you see on the map, meet the two hundred and fifty foot width. Before we did any of this, we actually went down to the, to the, to the, to Josh and looked through some previous paperwork. Historically, as you mentioned, the Gerbers had to go back and work an arrangement with a couple of the existing property owners adjacent to their property to get a total of three, three-acre lots to put the three houses on that are there now, of which one of it is ours. In that process, documented in a letter, is the fact that the widths of these three lots do not meet the two hundred and fifty foot width. So, it was all done through the board. Now, I don't know if that's the planning board, the zoning board, but that's the history that we were able to glean after looking through a whole bunch of manual paperwork with Josh. So, just, just to give you a little more history and, and fact of the current lot configuration.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I'd like to study it. I'd like, I'd like to look at the variances.
The, the subdivision map indicates when the zoning board dealt with the width variances. So, you know, that's a bit of evidence, like, to be able to explore also. But there's a whole options here. I mean, Lot number one, seven point some odd acres. I, I, I sort of questioned the mean lot width being correct. There again, I just want to get the correct number down. It's really not an average, it's a representative width of that lot.
I understand exactly what Don's saying. We, before we grant, or if we grant a variance or make a motion to grant a variance, we want to make sure the numbers are perfect or- And Don actually has an advantage over us because he was deputy superintendent and kind of public works for about thirty years. So, he understands the, the details that we should be looking for. Better back, he used to sit where Josh sits now. But I guess what I, I wanted more time to, to just study what's around it. Don needs more numbers. I think, Karen, I, personally, I'd, I'd rather table this to the next meeting so I feel comfortable with my decisions. With, I mean, it's, it's, it's in January, but you indicated you weren't going to build on it for years to come anyways, but I just, we need, we need the right numbers.
Okay, we can, we can agree to that. We think we have the right number, but-
That, that, that time will give me a break and I can feel satisfied with what I'm looking at and comfortable that I'm looking at.
Sure, not, not a problem.
I mean, I just looked at that map for a minute, but I'd rather study it.
Can we keep this map?
Do you, you agree with that?
Do you want any of it? Can you submit?
We should provide a copy. Yeah.
Um, yeah, just a question, and maybe it's because I don't see a lot of flag lots. The flag itself seems wide.
Wider than typical.
Wider than typical.
You mean the poles portion?
The pole, the pole of the flag. Why?
That was probably they had footage of the lot. Square, that, that-
But it detracts from the, the front lot and makes the front lot subs- more substandard.
Yep.
But if you narrow that options, they could do to, to try to minimize that. You know, it's up to the applicant. There's other options that they could minimize that.
Well, it's a balance because I, I, right now have a lot that complies, and I'm then now going to have two lots that, that comply less.
And Lot number one is?
Well, it's two fifty at the front and it'll be one seventy-nine at the back.
Yeah, and that could require any variance.
So, when they go to sell the front parcel, will there is for that as well?
That's correct.
So-
Yeah, there's, it's a little tricky. There's a little, little bit to this. To your point, if that flag, if the post of the flag was narrower and that lot line was moved up, it would, it would increase the width of both those lots, the one in front and the one in the rear. So, I think, now you're saying DeFrancos are not willing to do, DeFranco's own Lot one?
They own the whole piece.
Okay, now, it's important, important for them to realize that they're going to be substandard also, so you might want to get them involved and maybe reconfigure, and maybe their, their lot, lot could wind up a little, a little wider, but a little shorter, and that will help both of you. Cause it'll, it'll increase the average lot width on both those lots, Lot one and Lot two. Am I, am I reading it right?
Yes, cause actually both lots would require a variance.
Yep.
And I guess I'd still like to see that ten feet incorporated in Lot two to, to improve upon the width of it. There's, there's ways of making it more compliant, so we just need to make sure we explore all of those.
Okay.
So, you have homework and I have homework, all right?
We do.
So, you want to make a request to table till the next meeting?
We do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to table this till the January twelfth meeting. All favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, now-
Thank you.
Now we're familiar with, now we'll study a little more. Thank you.
Well, Chris just had me there. Josh, that map, that was looking at. The blinds don't line up with the map that we have.
All right, the next item on the agenda is ten forty-eight Glen Edith Drive, single family residence.
Ten forty-eight Glen Edith Drive, single family residence, located at ten forty-eight Glen Edith Drive, AKA Sunset Trail. Applicants Mary and Fred Washburn are requesting area variances to allow the following. A five-point-five foot north side setback where ten feet is required. A five-point-five feet south side setback where ten feet is required. A sixteen-foot front setback where thirty-five feet is required, associated with the construction of a single family residence on a point-two-four acre parcel having SBL number zero seven eight point one eight dash one dash sixty-seven, located in an MHR medium i residential district under section two-two-five dash thirteen of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you state your name, please, and then just tell us about your project?
I'm Wendy Maher with Maher Engineering here representing the clients. We're looking to do a tear-down rebuild of an existing home on Glen Edith. We are proposing, as documented, the setbacks of five and a half feet on the north and the south side, and the front setback, which noted was sixteen feet, it's actually sixteen point nine eight feet, front setback. The existing home is pretty dilapidated. It has a large retaining wall that's, that's currently in disrepair. The, the property owners would like to build a permanent residence here. The existing lot is fairly narrow, it's around fifty feet. So, by the time we had side setbacks per code, it would leave us very little room for a normal-size width home and allow for hallways and access from the upper and lower floors. The property from the road, it's a private road, and from the private road down to the waterfront is about thirty-three feet, so it, it has some challenges both vertically as well as, as width. We're looking to minimize those, those setbacks, but again, with the amount of investment to build on this property because of the, the constraints of the elevation, the owners want to make sure that they, it's worth the investment in the size of the house that they can place on there. They want to, the existing north setback is actually less than four inches different from the existing conditions. Our neighbor to the north has a similar five-foot setback, as well as a couple houses down the way on, considered on Sunset Trail have similar setbacks. The front setback that we're proposing is less than a fraction of an inch different from the pre-existing condition as well. We're setting back seventeen feet, or just shy of seventeen feet, to be able to park a car off of the private drive, which, as you know, there's a lot of constraints down there as far as the private road, so having a, a parking space off of the private drive is what we're proposing. I also wanted to just note that, again, we're, we have to build up more than out, but we're, we try to limit our width as much as possible. I'd like to entertain any questions that you might have.
The application says that the property to the south is vacant with little room to be developed. What efforts have you made to secure that parcel to get rid of the, the need for the variances at all?
Please, yes.
Whether the requested area variance is substantial. You say that two adjacent parcels to the south have same property owner, the parcel immediately to the south is vacant with little room to be developed in the future. Standard number two is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Have you pursued purchase of property to the south so that you can shift the whole house to the south and eliminate the need for any variances?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm the wife.
Could you step up, could you step to the microphone?
I'm sorry. I'm entertaining this with my husband, unfortunately, who had to go away on business, who is going to call in. Is he allowed to? He's on right now, am I allowed to have him speak or?
Yeah, sure.
I, I mean, can I, I'll put him on speaker for a minute?
Yeah, just hold it up to the microphone, everything.
Okay, honey, I'm going to put you-
You can repeat what I say if you'd like. Originally, we approached the property owner to the south and casual conversations, she did mention she would never sell the, the piece of, of land adjacent to her property. So, you know, we discounted that immediately. Certainly, that, you know, that was explored.
So, so what he's saying is that we have talked to her. In fact, I have to maybe clarify if I am correct, cause I'm just finding this out. Is that property owned by her?
It, it's not in her name, but, but the tax rolls and, and everything else are sent to her, so there is some relation between her and the person that owns that property. It's, it's just not listed as her piece of property. It's assessed for ten thousand. There is no property address, there is no property address associated with that, that particular parcel, so we assume it is a substandard lot. And, and again, you know, we did immediately approach her about getting rid of that piece of, piece of land, but, you know, she just said there's no way in, in fact that she would do it, so we're stuck with what we've got.
And with that, what we're asking for, if I'm correct, it's not a lot, and there's such an open area that it isn't, am I correct in saying that it's not obstructing any form of a view? It's not obstructing anything that would be the functionality of anything of any one of our neighbors, which has been high consideration of us the whole time. So, it's only because the width is more difficult. We also wanted a garage for the sake of, at our age now, and that was the biggest, to put the garage, right? So, we had-
Go ahead. So, the, the adjacent piece of property, it's got a significant slope from north to south, and right now she only uses it to park her car. Therefore, the, the actual house on that piece of property is about forty feet to the west, I'm sorry, forty feet, feet to the west of our property and down about thirty feet. They're more at waterline than anything else. So, you know, the, the easement to the south that we're asking for is, is definitely consistent with the easement that we have to the north already. And also, it's, won't interfere at all with the property owner to the south because that piece of property is, is really not where she would place a house or a garage or anything else.
Okay, now, for the record, you're Mary Washburn, and that's your husband?
Yes, my husband Fred, and I'm Mary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to, okay. You know, something I'm, I'm looking at here, there's stairs that are going to go down the north side of the property.
Fred, did you hear us?
There's stairs, now, are those stairs going to be wooden, constructed stairs, or are they going to be landscape stones cut into the soil? Because if it's a structure, that requires a variance, like a deck, if it's a structure, but if it's landscape stones on grade, that's, my, my, like a patio, landscape stones don't require variance because it's not considered a structure.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not a structure.
Landscape stones now.
Okay. Cause they go down that hole, that whole lot.
Also, though, I think a lot of that cement wall is already pre, it's pre-existing. Yes, our, our neighbors to the north- North.
Use, use the microphone, please.
The neighbor to the north has a pre-existing masonry retaining wall and similar stone path down to the waterfront. We're proposing the exact same thing adjacent to it.
Okay.
Yes, and, and actually, our neighbor to the north, unfortunately, her retaining wall, as you get closer towards the road, was constructed onto the Washburn's property slightly, so it's to their disadvantage a little bit, and they lost a little bit of land. Where those steps, right. Where those steps would be going, which you're in question right now, is, is part of that. But with our neighbor, she's been, you know, wonderful, it's not been an issue in discussion on that, so.
The retaining wall is falling apart. Now, I would say about midway, about the existing-
Now, I would say about midway, about the existing structure.
Yes, it is.
Are they going to repair that? Are you going to repair that?
Go for it. The house is built to get rid of that retaining wall, as I'm understanding. I hope you're listening, honey. That, the way it's being constructed is, instead of having a retaining wall, it is going to be, what, a cement structure?
Yeah, it'll be a segmental or a masonry wall that will run between the two stairways, and all of that will be rebuilt pretty much from the middle of the property down in conjunction with our neighbor.
Obviously, you have your neighbor's approval for that.
Yes. Well, it's, the wall is dividing us, that will remain and will.
We're going forward. So we're going a little more forward, and the wall is already there, has the divide, which is there, so yes. But that, you need a retaining wall to put the structure. What, are you laughing? I'm sorry.
Well, it's falling apart.
At a certain point, it jogs onto our parcel.
Right, and there's a wall that's falling into, into your parcel.
Yes.
So you, you don't take care of that with your neighbors, or you're not encroaching on his property?
Yes.
Not on their property.
Well, it's going to be on our property.
On our property, yeah.
It's adjacent to our.
Yes. I got you.
The wall's fluid, require a footer, and you're going to need to stop, I mean, that's, those soils are very sandy, and you've got to undermine it. So I would strongly suggest get some cooperation from your next door neighbor.
On what? I'm sorry, it's, I'm, it's hard to hear, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm not speaking loud enough?
You know what? I just can't hear.
Let me paraphrase.
Thank you.
The, the, the wall where you want to build it is going to require a significant foundation because the soils are so sandy and loose, and so your neighbors, you're going to have to get into your neighbor's property in order to dig a properly wide footer in order to do that, so.
I got you.
Don's suggestion is that you cooperate with that neighbor as much as you can on the project.
Absolutely, and I will share, Fred, would you please chime in, because you have done more research on this, as far as they're talking about the, the.
The retaining wall.
The retaining wall.
Mary, put me on the phone.
You are, honey.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, so there's, there's two, two retaining walls. Right near the house, between the two properties, there's a poured concrete wall that's in relatively good shape. Then it transcends into a stackable block wall. What we're intention is either shoring that up or replacing it with a similar masonry wall, poured concrete, as she, she has in, in the beginning. So it's fifty percent of that wall or less is poured, and the rest is the stackable, interlocking bricks, and, and that's the part that you're, that's the part that we would look to replace.
Did he help you?
Just to face the precaution.
Let me, let me open this meeting up to public comment. If someone wishes to speak for or against this application, our number is eight seven two seven zero one one. It's, it's, this is a challenging lot, like a lot of the Bayfront lots are. Not only you have the width and the depth to contend with, you have steep slopes, so you're kind of restricted as to where you could put the footprint of the house, because you have to basically stay off of that steep slope of the foundation. How many square feet is the house? I'm just curious.
I believe, so the footprint is about twelve to thirteen hundred per floor.
So it's about twenty-four hundred.
It'll be two floors with a unfinished basement.
Okay. Hello, you're with the Webster's EBA?
Yeah, hi, I wanted to comment on the application that's in front of you at this moment. I just want to, and we live a couple doors down from the project.
That's your address?
We're in total favor of the project, as was described, it's replacing a relatively dilapidated home that, you know, is about to fall down, and the addition would be a significant plus to the, to the neighborhood, and I think, you know, neighbors that I've talked to down here were all in favor of that, but I can't speak for them directly, but I just don't, I'm very concerned that they are positive projects.
What's your address, sir?
It's ten forty-four, Sunset Trail.
Anything else?
That's it.
I appreciate your call, thank you.
Okay.
I, I agree with the gentleman, that house that's there needs to be taken down, needs to be, it'd be nice to see a quality home there. We see all the time where these substandard lots, nothing gets built without variances, of course. The house isn't excessive in size. The garage is not excessive in size. It's, you know, and, and they're staying off the steep slope. What do you, you have the deck extending out over the slope, is that what I'm seeing?
Two, yes. We're extending about another twenty feet, fifty feet towards the length with, with a couple levels of decks.
Well, it's just, it's basically because of the way they constructed, or the way, my husband has researched this, he's very diligent about this, as he was with putting up that dock, which, that we have in the waterfront, we're the only property that did not go underwater at all during all the Bay episodes, and, so he's really looked into the best, safest, and being an engineer, way to put this together for all intent purposes, not just for us, but for the neighbors and the neighborhood. So it's, I don't want to say excessive, I wish we didn't have to do as much, but.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
Trust me, it's, it's a challenge, but he's really afforded a lot of time and effort, and it's, you know, to make sure, and he will make sure it's done the right way.
Now, it looks like the north, north setback is very similar to the existing structure. The, the front setback is very similar to the existing structure, the only one with a significant change is, would be the, would be the south setback. Am I seeing that right?
That's correct. We're only four inches difference from the north setback, the existing north setback, and only less than, less than an inch from the front setback that is pre-existing.
Any other thoughts?
No, no further questions.
Now, let me ask you this, because this footprint's exactly what you're going to build? The footprint that's indicated, because we, I don't have a house plan, obviously, is this footprint exactly what you're going to build?
Yes, and I, I do have a set of, a footprint of the house, house plans, if you'd like to see that.
I guess, if you were watching previous applications, we're asking for the, what's the exact plan of the house before, and, and so that's, that's the reason I'm asking that question, in order to be consistent.
Well, again, I'm not too worried about what the interior looks like.
No, no, I just want to make sure the footprint's not going to change.
Exterior footprint.
No, I, I believe, we don't have a lot of options on that one, to be honest with you, so we're pretty down enough.
Okay, thank you. Oh, this is great.
For me to get a better perspective of what you're anticipating doing, the upper deck is, will be the same elevation as the upper deck of the house to the north of you?
Say, one more time?
The upper deck.
Yep, the very, that's on the main floor, that's the upper deck, yes.
Okay. Is that going to be the same elevation as the upper deck of the house north of you?
Fred, do you hear the question?
Which is ten forty-six.
I think my husband did work into that, so we're not at the same plane that we are not, what you're asking is that we're not obscuring her view where we're going, we're up, for both purposes, hers and ours, yes. We are at a different level, Fred, correct, on our main floor where the deck is coming out, that we're not at the same level where Thomasina's is, is that correct?
I think he's gone.
This is just.
Yeah, I think, you know what? It's better.
Yes, we did.
Okay, is it?
Yep, it's on the here.
Okay, so, so the, the house to the north of us, they actually have built down, so they have two decks. One, their, their main deck, it will be lower, much lower, because they've actually built their property down. Our, our property, the, the house facing, or the west wall will be prominent to their property, so they won't have to look at our deck, and, and we won't have to look at theirs, purposely did that, so we're both afforded a degree of privacy.
What do you think of the view, is that?
Yeah, yeah, because this does extend towards the bay, much more than the house to the north.
Their, their first floor, if you step down about four feet, and then their first deck is at that level, and then you go down a level, the Washburns, their first floor is at the road level, and then they go up to their bedroom level where there'll be a deck, and then the road level will have a deck.
So, will, will they have a basement also?
They will have a basement, and they have like a walkout patio area, but again, they're staggered by about four feet, four or five feet from the adjacent four elevations.
It gives me a better idea, thank you.
Josh, do we have any letters from neighbors? So with that out, I'll close the public portion, and bring it back to the board. I think, I think that desperately needs a new house on that lot.
Yeah.
And, and the, as I said, the only setback that really varies substantially from the original house that's on their property is the one to the south, and as the applicant stated, that's very, almost an unbuildable lot, is that, so there's probably not going to be any neighbor there anytime soon, and even so, it's still a five-point-five foot side setback there.
The only positive with that is there's only an area of stone and dirt that where the car would be parked, being on her behalf, we're missing a lot, but that's where the car is. The only positive from where we're building a little more, I shoveled, I cleaned the path out, because she gets in late at night, she's a, you know, a little older, and our property being that, that way is going to be kind of a block. It's not going to block a view, but it also is going to be somewhat of a barrier from the, from the weather, from the snow, and, you know, that's the only positive I see on that.
Oh, shoot. That's, um.
I, I keep forgetting, it's really important, not, not only so we could hear you, but the stenographer could, she has to.
I'm sorry.
To this meeting after the fact, and we, a lot of times we have blanks because people don't speak in the microphone.
No, I wasn't supposed to be here, this was my husband's show.
You're doing, you're doing fine. Somebody, any other thoughts before we go through standards?
Well, my problem is that we're expanding this out so far, that, you know, it's, it's one thing to start with a fifteen-foot setback and say, okay, we're going to go to ten to make it, you know, a reasonable sized house, but now we're saying we're going to take that all the way down to five feet. And that, I, I don't see how that plays, how that meets the standards, because that, that south setback, as it's existing, is, you know, not, not bad at all, especially compared to the discussions we've had in the past couple of weeks. And when we now say, okay, we're going to take that right down to five feet and not even give it a second thought, I, I can't see where that's appropriate, because we're just maxing this lot out. We're right back to my favorite analogy of putting a ten-pound load into a five-pound bag. So, no, I, I can't see that five-foot side setback to the south that does not have to be there at that level.
My, my thought is, I walked back, that lot drops off, so.
Oh, yeah.
I, I know, I know you're alluding to other lots that we just, we've been dealing with on Bay Road, but those, those houses were fifty and sixty feet deep, and they could probably, they could, they can't go there. I mean, this house is only, I'm guessing, thirty-five, forty feet deep with the garage.
Right, so because.
In other words, it has no, somehow.
We have to build up, we have to have room for hallways and stairways, and with that, you can barely get two normal-sized rooms with that width of the house.
Right.
But the investment we have to make to do a foundation and, and actually build on that lot, you want to have a house that you can, can put some.
I understand exactly what Eric is saying, because we, we have lengthy, we, we, the variances for everything on Lake Road, forty-foot lots, but they were deeper. And, and as, as counsel said to the applicant, and I've said before, we look at every application on its own merit, because these, this lot's a different shape than the ones on Lake Road. This one's a little wider, but much shorter, so therefore, you can't go deeper with the house to give yourself the footage. You follow, you follow my logic?
Well, yes and no, because you could go closer to the private road, but they want to have a parking space off the private road, but they've got the space with the Jersey Wall on the opposite side, you just have to walk across the road. So again, this is, this is the configuration they want, but it creates an imposition to the property to the south, and it's unnecessary. There's nothing in particular that says that this house has to be this square footage. You say it has to go somewhere, I say it can go away.
Well, the garage is, is substandard by today's standards.
Well, again, that's.
And it's only seventeen feet off the road, which is just enough for a car. You're suggesting putting the garage across the street?
No, I'm suggesting not putting a car in the driveway, putting the car across the street if it's going to be sitting outside.
But then the front setback becomes a lot less than the seventeen feet.
Right.
And it, and it's a given take, but it's.
Yeah, but it's, okay, we've got a private road going by there, how much of an imposition is that versus a five-foot setback, which is substantial?
I'm sorry.
The public portion's closed.
Now.
This is my husband. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we're, we're going to, the board has to have a discussion at this point in time.
Could I just comment on the, the garage part of it? Because if he understands, if I'm correct, so in other words, my husband can't speak, can I, am I allowed to just speak?
Well, let, let us, let's have our discussion here first, and then, and then, you know, we could ask if we need some input. I guess, Eric and I see it a little bit differently, I, I'd just like to hear from everybody.
What's the total square footage of, of the house? You said it was twenty-two hundred?
The footprint's about twelve to thirteen hundred, I, I changed it up, handoff, I've been on twelve hundred.
Each floor?
Yes.
Two floors, so about twenty-four hundred square feet.
And then the basement, that could be finished out later.
Okay. Is it a full-size basement?
It's a six.
The entire footprint of the house?
No, it, the, the foundation's stepped in a little bit, so as you step, it's downhill. It's a little smaller.
So, I'm looking at the, at the drawing. You've, you've pushed, the proposed house, it looks like you've pushed it, according to the elevation map, into the portion that's about two seventy-three. So you've actually pushed it significantly to the, to the west to accommodate a garage and a relatively small. I think the point that's trying to be made is that, can you get this, the structure, the size that you want? the size that you want, narrow it and make it longer?
No.
All right.
And that would be my husband, can I pop him on?
That's the term.
I mean, I know he's supposed to be.
That's, that's the question that we need, that we need to hear answered for us.
Again, it's the hallway, the access for the stairs, and we need that parking space in front of the, the proposed home. We only have about two parking spaces on the other side of the road, and then it goes straight up from there. The, it's, the road is very narrow, we need to get cars away from there to allow access for fire vehicles too. So, the, the further we can get the, the cars off the road and not have to park parallel to the road, is safer.
Before, you know, before we, you get your husband, I'd, I'd like to hear Dan concurrent, because then we could pull it all together, get everybody's thoughts.
This lot certainly has its challenges, and I, I really don't think it needs to be of the size that's being proposed. If they could, I know where Eric's coming from, but, you know, if they could terrace the house, so it follows the hillside, it's, it drops down fairly quickly, and basically, there's four levels that are being proposed in this house, correct me if I'm wrong.
So, there's the upper floor, second floor. The floor at the road level, there's a basement, and then there's a foundation, foundation level.
But could I clarify one thing, and again, I.
If you know the properties next to us, they've had to put up retaining wall of some degree. If you look at two doors down, they used these massive blocks, what we're trying to do, you know, stone, and the way they had to put, we're doing the leveling up that way to shore up to be our, it's basically the retaining. The purpose for that floor and the staggering is a lot less expensive, if I'm correct in saying, than what Bellows did two doors down, which is gorgeous, it's much more prettier. This is a way of going to the two levels, so you're down at the bottom level, the next level, that is to shore up the whole property in the best way we could, the cheapest way we could, in this, in this, in, basically the cheaper way, I would love to do the stone, it just can't happen. As far as narrowing it, each floor is only 1,200, those two floors. Then you have the basement, which again, would technically be where the Bellows have all the stones, that's all would have been stones all the way up, and then the property. The, the garage aspect, which is the negative, the property, the street, and then that little piece of land, there's barely fits the two cars between the street. To develop that, you're looking at probably 250,000 or more to take down all the dirt, put that retaining wall up, and have our garage, which is again, it, it is, that is.
No, you misunderstand, I'm not suggesting that at all.
No, no, I know, but to have a garage, we can't put one anywhere else other than to tear down that dirt, and that's.
I'm not, no, I'm not saying to do that either.
Yeah, I think Eric's questioning the width of the house and the five foot side setback to the south.
Okay, see, and again, I'm not, I just, I misunderstood.
And he's, and he's asking.
The board has asked questions to see if they, if there's concessions that can be made to alleviate the variance that you're requesting. The variance you're requesting is five and a half feet on either side. The board has to determine by asking questions that we're asking, if you can form the, the house a different way, get what you want, and then limit, and increase the variance that you're asking for on the north and south side. So that's why we're asking those questions.
I got you, and I understand. The only person that has the best answer for you, that would give you the reasoning why exactly to the T is my husband, and that's the only, he said I, he would like to, if he could. Again, I apologize for.
That's all right.
Maybe we should table this one too.
So we're asking the questions, so you're asking for variance, it's 15 feet, I'm correct, right? 15 feet normally?
10, 10 is what's required or 15?
15.
No, 10 is what's required.
10 is, so you're asking for?
No, he said no, my husband said no.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's, it's 10 on the drawings, I see 10, but I thought I heard 15.
The, the existing house is 15 feet now from the south property line.
Correct.
The code requires 10 feet.
Right.
The plans ask for five and a half.
Okay.
We're five and a half away, we're asking for four variance.
Yes. Now, this plan of the house, it looks like four stories are the, the main level here, this is the, the floor I would go into, this is the upstairs, I'll call it level two. The basement here, and then the garage door.
10 is required.
All right, pause for a second, what are you requesting?
So, the bottom level is the foundation of the house. And it, we've built the, the foundation wall around and created garage doors, so it'll just be storage for, you know, lake, lake toys, if you will. But the sides on the, the lowest level, which is the basement, again, because of the constraints of the elevations on the lot, we have to create a retaining wall to create a patio area and access to the basement area.
The variance request that we have in front of us asks for five and a half feet, and I've heard you say four and a half feet a couple of times.
We are five and a half feet from the property line, we're asking for a four and a half foot variance.
Five and a half.
5.5 plus 4.5 equals 10.
Five and a half.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, we're saying the same thing, because.
Yes, we're five and a half feet from property line to structure.
You're going to, you're proposing that you want to build a structure that instead of 10 feet side setback, it has a five and a half foot side setback?
That's correct, four and a half foot variance.
We haven't heard from you.
We're speaking.
I, I think, I think the question, the question at hand is the five and a half foot side setback to the south.
Correct.
Okay. I don't think we have an issue with the front or the north side, it's the south side. Is there any way to modify the plan that would increase that number?
Can you speak, Fred? Can you repeat the question for him?
I am, and.
What I'm hearing from the board is that, that five and a half foot south setback.
We're requesting five and a half foot, uh, variance, or four and a half foot variance, so we would have five and a half foot to the property line.
Correct, Dad, he's asking the question whether or not you could modify the plan in this way in order to hit my staff.
Increase the setback.
No, we can't, because it would.
Explain, please, honey.
Okay, okay, so, am I on speaker for them, or I can't?
We can hear you.
Yeah, they can hear you, honey.
Okay, okay, so, so we looked at, at probably four variations of design. We're, we're designing this house for retirement, so we're doing accessible, wide, wide hallways, we are putting in an elevator, so we can utilize, so we can get up and down the property. So this is going to be our retirement home. Again, the, the, the property to, adjacent to the south, it's a, it's a vacant, basically a vacant lot that our neighbor, the next lot down uses for parking. It's assessed at $10,000, the piece of property. She's paying taxes for $10,000 on that piece of property, so I've got to believe it is not a developed property, and based on the pitch from north to south of that property, it's not developed. So it's not going, the, the variance that we're asking, the four and a half feet variance, is not going to affect her property value at all. We've, we've tried many different plans to, to get this, and I have to realize we have, we lose 50% of our, our entire footprint on this piece of property, because we have an easement for the driveway that, I'm sorry, an easement for the roadway that goes through 50% of our property, and on the east side, we have the hill, so we've got very little parking, and we are trying to keep that so we can, right now, people just push snow into that area from the whole neighborhood, and we have to leave some of that area open for snow removal and, and that type of thing. So, we, we have to have a garage, again, this is going to be our retirement home, so we had to put that on the, along with the house, so that affected and effectively took away a lot of square footage that would have been available to develop, you know, a proper footprint. So right now, if, you know, the main floor is 1,200 square feet, the, the floor below it, as, as Wendy said, I think it's about 800 square feet, it's staggered and is not, that's what we're calling a basement. And the floor below that, this, what you're, what you're seeing is the fourth floor, that is storage, and that is still smaller. It's unfinished, it's basically serving as retaining wall. As my wife explained, instead of building, you know, a retaining wall, a lot of block, similar to our, our neighbors at 1046, Warren, who just called in, we're using that as the ability to store things, because quite honestly, the property is so narrow as it is, it's very difficult to do anything. Once you get something down like a, you know, a lawn chair or anything else, you need somewhere to store it during the winter. Anything that comes off a boat or anything else, you need place to store it, so out of the elements. So, so that's, that's what we're doing. Regarding Eric's request on, on the variance, you know, as I said, the, the piece of property will not at all be affected, in fact, you know, the entire development project will significantly increase our property value.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Excuse me a second.
Okay.
Okay. What we need is specific points, not a long narrative, all right?
This was unforeseen, so.
And, I guess, I, no, I. Were, did you have something to say before she went on the phone there?
Well, I, my question was the same as Eric's, just looking at the existing house was at 15, and the proposed house is 10 feet wider essentially. And, and I understand the limitations of the lot, but we just need to understand why that side setback couldn't be increased somewhat by, by skinnying the house. We, we just.
And, and to the point that keeps being made, but is irrelevant, we can't create an imposition to the property to the south, whether it's represented as undevelopable or what. We're giving a variance that's basically 45% of what's permissible, and that's significant, and it will impact the property to the south, whether the applicant feels that it's developable or not.
Right.
That's the point.
So, are there, are they okay with the five feet on the north side? Whether it is actually a home?
Well, it's basically not a forming.
Well, that's the same wall, it's, that wall's already there.
I guess I just don't understand the argument that's being made there.
That's why you're not on the board.
Yeah.
It's going to make the house about 25, 28 feet wide. Which, how do you get a hallway, a room, or two rooms, or access for stairs in that narrow of a lot, or building?
Well, let's not forget.
Extremely difficult.
Let's not forget, these used to be cattages, all seasonable cattages, now you're trying to make it into a year round home with the same lot size.
I know, but this.
It is what it is.
I know.
The print is small for my old eyes. What is the actual width of the house? Because I can't tell if it's 34 feet or 39 feet.
39.
And then the.
39.
The depth appears to be 50 feet from the front of the garage to the back of, back wall.
Okay, I.
About, is it? You gotta come over here.
Hey, I can't prepare.
That's a good way to stop. Might step up to Mike, did you have something to say?
So it's 29 feet wide, if, if we, I guess, don't get the variance, it'd be about 25 foot wide house.
We're not saying we won't give any variance, but what I'm hearing, the feedback I'm, I'm getting from the board members is they think 5, 5.5 feet's too close to that line. Am I reading you all right?
No, and, and I don't even know that I'm, I'm ready to say that, just that I need to understand why, why you can't take two feet off the width of the house and make it a little bit wider.
Longer, longer. Okay, well, we could talk in circles, but I think, I think these side setbacks are an issue. They've been an issue, there are, especially on these narrow lots. So, what I would suggest is that you table, table the, table the application, go back to the drawing board and see if we could save a couple of feet on that, on that side.
Okay, it's, it's very consistent with the neighborhood. That's the other thing, which is important to know. If you're there, and I know you probably know the property, I'm saying we are not much different, and we're also not near any structure, so as he said, Josh, he's absolutely right, to the side, there was, there's only X amount of feet, and there's a house right butted up next to us, where we're in an unventful area, which is all wooded, it's, not wooded, but it's just nothing but trash, if you go there, you will see. My point is.
I understand.
If it could have been smaller, and this is my honest.
I'll make a motion to deny. I will enumerate if I have a second, thank you. Does he have a second?
Yes.
Okay.
We would like to.
Mr. Schneiderman motion, there's no second, so we're not going to vote on it, but after all this discussion, I want to drive down that street again. You're saying it's consistent with the neighborhood, I drove through there, I looked at it, I'm going to look at it in a different way now, I'm going to look at it in a different way. But at the same time, I'd like you to consider any way that you can make that house narrower, because that would make it easier for us to approve the variance.
Understood.
So, why don't we, I, I, I don't see it passing tonight as presented, so why don't you, if you could request to table to the next meeting?
We would like to formally request that you table our application.
And you go back to the drawing board, I'm, I'm going to drive down that road again, and look at every house and see how close they are to lot lines, and see if it is in fact consistent with the neighborhood, okay?
If you could provide us larger scale drawings too of what you're proposing of the structure, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we didn't get that in our.
And the meeting's the January 12th?
January 12th, yeah. So, on behalf of the applicant, I'm going to make a motion to, to table for January 12th.
7th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, if you do revise plan, if you could, if you're able to revise a plan and edit something that, that you're pleased with, get it to Josh as quickly as possible so we have a chance to review it, all right? Okay, I appreciate it. All right, thanks.
Do you understand the board's, I think the recommendation for the board is that we're, that they're overall okay with the setback on the north side, but we want you to limit the south side?
Yeah, and the only reason we're okay with that is because it's the same as it is today, it's not, it's preexisting.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, that concludes tonight's meeting. We won't have a meeting later in December, but we will be back on January 12th, so I hope to see you then, you all have a great holiday, thanks for watching.